So I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting for June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to order and turn things over to Commissioner Brain to lead us into vacation.
All right, let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. We have a lot of exciting things going on in our community. Youth baseball championships being played next door. Families all over the community celebrating graduations, whether it be kindergarten, middle school, or high school, or even college. And while we should and continue celebrating these achievements and the exciting times, we must remember those who are suffering from the tragic events in Texas. And we pray that you be with their families during this very difficult time. And Lord, we also ask that you be with us tonight as we do the town's business. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item up is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item number three is public hearings. We have none that are slated for this evening. So we'll move it along into item number four, which is citizens' comments. I think we've got one person that had signed up to speak, Ms. Long. All right, so I'll go ahead and open up the floor for Ms. Long to discuss the Journey Ministry Pantry.
Thank you for the opportunity, keeper by citizens' councils. My name is Helen Long, and I'm the executive director for the Journey Ministry Pantry. And the Journey Ministry Pantry is a new nonprofit corporation, I was just saying. Located right here in Youngsville. And we serve the greater community here, youngsters that have food insecurity. This is one of my board of directors. She's here to assist me. And the last time I spoke was last year in November. Unfortunately, at that time, we had to close our pantry after working three years tirelessly for the community. But the good thing is, we're no longer going to be closed. We have our pantry reopening very soon. Since, and this is Melanie Floyd, I'm sorry, one of our board members. And we're due to the graciousness of Mr. and Mrs. Brian Whitley of the Victorian, who so willingly, working with us, provided a temporary space for us to open a pantry so that the community can get back into receiving food on a regular basis. We're so excited about that at this time. And our new location, our temporary location will be at one eleven East Persephone Street here in the downtown area. We have some flyers, anyone that knows of anyone that needs to, you know, come to our pantry. The only thing that they need to provide to us is a photo ID address, and that's it. So we have a lot of support networks. Again, thank you to Brian and his lovely wife for providing a temporary location for us to serve. The Journey Ministry is just opening. I know there's a lot of businesses starting, businesses downtown, a lot of businesses out on the outskirts of town. We want to get our name out there to those people that run into everyday people like us that might need a helping hand, because that's what we do. We're not looking for payment. We're not looking for anything in return. We're looking to give, and that's what our commission is with this pantry that we give. We give wholeheartedly, and not just, you know, a millet here and there, but whatever we have, we serve it to the community. So we want to thank the town of Youngsville also for doing what they could do for us. I just believe that everything is going to work together, that we all work together. And if anyone decides they want to do a food drive or anything of that nature, just let us know. We are on the Facebook, you know, Facebook, the, the, the Journey.
The Journey.
The Journey Pantry, yes. On Facebook, I also sent Melanie a flyer. And Melanie has some flyers. If you want to, if you'd like one, please see her, and she'll be happy to join you. It has all that information out there, and we are five oh one C three. So if you choose to give donations, feel free. We are on PayPal as well, so if you want to make a contribution through PayPal or you want to make a check directly to us, feel free to do that.
Helen, with Ms. Ellen's permission, she didn't ask me to come for this reason, but I wanted to take this chance to let you know that Ms. Helen has almost ten years' experience operating a food pantry in Wake County and Frank County areas. She's extremely well-connected. She's certainly well-versed in all of the aspects. She works with various security entities, as do I. I guess all on a volunteer basis, but she's extremely committed. As the best of the board members for Journey Ministry Pantry. And we have a lot of network contacts, and it's not one that you necessarily need. Everyone's, everyone's, that are in your background, that are in your circumstances, and that's the job. And, but it is very helpful to have a pantry start. That is not the answer to this, because when you first start a food pantry, it's a steep learning curve. And we don't have that, thanks to Ms. Ellen and my husband, Mr. Robert, and some of the other board members that have done this for years with other groups. And because of that, they bring that old, good experience and expertise. And also, I can attest to that they are very good neighbors. Because one of the concerns, of course, would always be, there are important businesses. There's downtown Grace. It's very important to the town. And we also, I have the Little Wake Forest, and we're in front of Wake Forest in Youngsville. And my parents live near here. It's very important to both towns. That anything located in those towns is well-run, and good neighbors, and that's really important. And I think that, I expect that all of you will be very well-pleased with what you see from this pantry, your own home place in the town and in the community.
Ms. Long, if you don't mind me asking, are there specific hours that you will be open?
Right now, yes, there are open specific hours, but I do not have the time yet. We were open on Tuesdays. We're still trying to get back into that Tuesday grid from two thirty to five every Tuesday. Also, we do a quarterly community feeding, which is on a quarterly Saturday, which is June. But we're gonna change that thing also, but that's once a month. Where we were feeding probably about two hundred families on that particular Tuesday, on that particular Saturday. So right now, we don't have a date, but within the next week to two weeks, we will have the official date. And it will go out hopefully on the committee on the town website.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Thank you, Ms. Floyd. All right, do we have any additional citizens' comments?
The folks are here to speak on a later item on the agenda. Do you want them to speak here or at that item?
I would prefer for us to go ahead and get the citizens' comments out of the way so we can conduct business when we get to that point. So per Mr. Page's comments, if you have citizens' comments that you would like to make in regards to, I'm assuming what we're referring to is the Main Street Social District? Is that where, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if anyone would like to make any citizens' comments that would be related to the Main Street Social District, I will give you the floor to speak at this moment.
Thanks so much for having me. My name is Amy Carlga. I live at thirty-five Policy Lane in Youngsville. I own the Burnt Barrel, that one thirty-five foot pantry. I'm also on the board of the newly established Youngsville Downtown Merchants Association. You've probably heard, we are putting together a large event for downtown in light of Franklinton and Wake Forest. And there's some really great events. We want to show how much, what's the area that the business owners have found will be beneficial, would be to open up social districting. We've seen the model set up in Franklinton. It's been very successful. We've talked to the business owners in the group, and they also feel that it would be beneficial to the group as well as a summary of customers who agree that they would also appreciate this type of setting downtown.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, do we have any additional citizens' comments? All right, hearing none. We'll move along into the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we got a first, I hear a second.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? The consent agenda is approved, and we'll move along into item K, which, oh, actually, no. That was the, that was part of the consent agenda. That is my bad. That was my bad. Okay, well, yeah, I'm not even gonna get into that. All right, so item number six, old business, and item A under it is to continue discussion on proposed traffic calming policy. We do have the action requested here to adopt the Youngsville Residential Traffic Calming Policy, but I'll open the floor to any of the commissioners who may have questions, comments, or concerns in regards to that.
I think it's a good start. I've spoken with Mr. Page and kind of gone back and forth about a couple of different things in here, but I think this is a good start. Happy with it.
Yeah, I agree, and I've seen some comments made about the traffic calming policy. And I think people think this is meant to solve all the traffic problems, and that's not what it's intended to do. It's intended to solve spot problems in neighborhoods and small streets. So I just wanted to make that comment so that we're clear about what this is, what problem this is trying to address.
All right, any additional questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none. Again, the action requested here is to adopt the Youngsville Residential Traffic Calming Policy. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
We got a first. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and any opposed? That is also unanimous. Item number seven is new business. Item A there is discussion and possible adoption of the Main Street Social District and announcement of Summerfest event. Action requested here is to adopt changes to the town of Youngsville's code of ordinances, adding a Main Street Social District to chapter seven, as well as the necessary changes to chapter eight. Do any of the commissioners have any questions, comments, concerns, soapbox items they want to jump up on or anything like that?
You would think that I'd be the first one to say the social district, because I'm cat. But I do have concerns. Like, I do want to keep pace with Wake Forest and Franklinton, and I don't want to be left behind by any means, but I just want to make sure that we have thought about everything. We don't just jump into it. I have been, again, back and forth with Mr. Page, talking about signage requirements and the cost for that. One of my, my concerns is that I, the empty containers being properly disposed of. So I would like to make sure that we address that before, personally, I'd like to address that before we make a motion. The other thing I wanted to talk about were warnings or citations by police. If people don't follow the criteria like that, you know, we're not within four to nine, and so it's three o'clock. So what happens? Like, how are the police gonna address that? Are we just gonna say, hey, don't do that, or is this gonna be an issue for police? And then one of the things, too, was just talking about, I know that within this ordinance, which I can't read because I still haven't gone to the I document. I had an appointment today. They canceled it. It was not my fault. Was talking about the logo, that there needs to be the logo from the business, and then also the logo of the town or social district. So I just wanted to discuss that. And since both of the businesses that serve alcohol have a representative, I just would love to just kind of, if we're okay with that, just kind of talk it out, make sure we're good with them spending money for specific containers that are gonna meet the requirements. Yeah, so I have, that's all of that. I have a lot of things I want to discuss. I can throw that all out there.
Okay.
Not sure where you want to start.
So the biggest, so I'm assuming one of the largest issues, the, I guess what has been proposed is what, Thursday through Sunday?
Saturday.
Dinner's three down. Four to nine P M. on Thursday and Friday, as well as noon to nine on Saturday.
Okay.
It's all right for me to weigh in and begin the process of discussing some of this event's concerns. To provide background on how this was drafted, a number of the requirements were imported from the statute governing social districts. You know, the very complicated rules that establishments have to follow from the ABC Commission and from the General Assembly also include rules that towns have to follow if those communities are allowed to let people drink beyond the boundaries of their establishment. So, for example, with regard to the containers, section seven point oh three and seven point oh four, just those things, those are directly from the statutes, and the town does not have a choice about those.
Right.
Which is to have a social district. With regards to potential criminal consequences of violating this, we'll note that it, at present, it is currently not lawful to drink in public. I know we're modifying that ordinance, and as it's set up, it would be just as the police department currently enforces it for any times other than the social district times and locations. So, you know, that would be sort of law enforcement discretion, how they enforce it. But because we're required to post the social district times and days so prominently, I don't think it would be reasonable for people to make too many mistakes about that, at least after, after we first get going.
Yeah, that's a good point.
What other item Commissioner Redd is, the requirement for a logo on the cup could simply be the logo of the establishment itself, because there's not a burnt barrel operating in Franklinton or Wake Forest. We would know that that was burnt barrel here in Youngsville.
Gotcha.
I believe that the intention here was so that somebody can't go over to Speedway, pop open a forty, and be walking down the street with it.
I just, when I saw section seven, two, A and B, I interpreted that that there would have to be two different logos, one for the company and one for the town.
As long as the logo meets both purposes, I think it would be fine.
Gotcha. Okay, good. Okay, so I think the only other thing on my long list of things to chat about was trash receptacles.
During the interim between now and when the Main Street Improvement Project is complete, I would recommend that if it's a problem, we can place a few of our roll carts downtown at strategic locations, hopefully to have some merchant ambassadors to look over after them. And then when we have our gorgeous street in place, nine months from now, that we purchase some upgraded, really fancy trash cans that are, you know, keep the rain out, but still allow people to put trash in them. They're not large enough that you can shove household trash in there, but the sort of stuff that you'll be walking down the street with. And, you know, I mean, we could probably get away with a very reasonable price to put those through this district once the project is complete. I would not recommend we purchase fancy trash cans while there's a bunch of bulldozers rolling down the street.
Okay, I agree with that.
I'm heard.
Own cats, so they wouldn't necessarily need, because there's not franchises of any of the establishments in town, they wouldn't necessarily need the Youngsville logo?
A logo specific to the, the subject.
The town.
Yeah. They would not necessarily need the town logo at this point, but if, if that were to change, we'd need to.
Since they're all here, can I ask a question and have them answer? Just on that. Yeah.
That's the mayor to.
That's why I was. Because obviously, as a town, we would like to, like, show our brand and like, hey, look, this is the town of Youngsville. Would any of you guys be opposed to having both on there?
I think if it's a, for my part, Amy, the burnt barrel, for my part, if it's a case of we can get both logos into one print space and it's not an extra cost or two.
Like, yeah, double-sided? Same? Okay, yeah, okay.
I like brand recognition.
Yeah, that's where it is. Okay, like.
I'll add that I really like this idea of, I bounced this off of Mayor Flowers and Nathan Page for a few months now, and it's, it's good to see the businesses come forward, because that's what this is for, so I'm glad you guys want it. And I know, you know, I've talked with Brandon and Doc Love about some of the specifics, and I know there's a lot of questions about it, and, you know, this is probably not perfect, and it's a living document, so we encourage you to give us feedback and help us make it better, because that's what we want. We want this for you guys. And I really hope this helps both sides, the retail and the bars in town. I think it could be a great thing for our community, and I hope you guys work well together, and I hope this brings us together even more than we already are. So I'm excited about it.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns?
What's gonna be the additional police cost?
Do we think there will?
I assume we will have additional police during these times.
I can let Chief Whitley speak to the particulars, but it's my understanding that we expect this to be covered within our existing shifts. For most of this, we have three officers on shift. And frankly, if it takes more than three officers, we probably ought to do away with it anyway.
But those three officers won't be in that two-block radius.
Not the whole time, but they'll be able to respond quickly.
Chief, did you have any concerns or anything that you would like to add prior to discussing further?
No, sir, I don't really have any particular concerns. The only thing that I would add is just to kind of add on to what Ms. Parker Jones said. I don't anticipate this changing our enforcement approach that we would typically have. There's already state legislation, or state law rather, in place, federal bids, public drunkenness and ameubriation, boat shrinking anyway. So our officers will just be particularly mindful for anyone outside of those hours.
Okay.
And again, I don't anticipate any issues with response time, should there be an issue. And to be honest with Mr. Page, I think if it becomes an issue, it's something to reconsider at that.
Sure, yeah, okay. That makes sense to me. Commissioner Wiggins, did you have any follow-up questions for Chief?
No, that was my main one.
All right. All right, well, if there are no additional questions, comments, or concerns, I'll go back. Again, the action requested here is to adopt changes to the town of Youngsville's code of ordinances, adding a Main Street Social District to chapter seven, as well as the necessary changes to chapter eight. Do I hear a motion to adopt those changes?
Motion to adopt as requested.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item B is the Sesquicentennial presentation. We've got, do we have someone that's gonna present, or we just gonna look through this?
I'll be your girl.
Thank you, Madam Tharp.
All right, so as you know, the Sesquicentennial is in a few years, twenty twenty-five.
Tell what the Sesquicentennial is for.
That would be, that would be a hundred and fifty years, right?
Yes.
Is that accurate? Okay, all right. Thought my mouth carried the one, divided by, so, okay, yeah.
So the town of Youngsville was incorporated on March seventeenth, eighteen seventy-five. Its name was changed from Pacific to Youngsville in honor of the young families for their generous donations of land, which included the training depot, as well as various churches in our area. Next slide, please. In nineteen seventy-five, the town of Youngsville held a ten-day-long celebration focusing on Youngsville's eighteen seventy-five culture and heritage. With multiple, multiple events, they honored their past. It's not showing up here, but in your packet. Some of the events included square dancing, dedication of the new armory, a formal opening of the Centennial Museum, a promenade in centennial attire, a quilting party, a tea party, the Centennial Tree planting, which is the still on Main Street, Heritage Parade, a centennial luncheon with the guests Lieutenant Governor Hunt, country music and old-fashioned games, a church social, and a birthday party at the Armory.
Can we go back a slide real quick? I'm just excited about everybody having to dress like these guys right here.
So not only did they dress like that, there is a proclamation that requested that all men not shave for years, so they have to keep their ears going.
Sorry, I'm thirty minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and do y'all a favor and not do that.
There's, Dr. Corporate headed that. There is a scrapbook with a ton of pictures in the town hall. But yes, it was, there's some interesting pictures if you ever take.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt. It's just I, yeah, I saw that and I had to say.
We previously discussed having a large celebration in honor of our hundred fiftieth anniversary. In order to move forward, staff needs some direction from the board regarding festivities. At this time, we need to decide what type of celebration the town wants to have and where to have it. They had a ten-day-long celebration. I don't know if y'all want to have a weekend, a week-long celebration. Several events throughout the year, such as maybe monthly, quarterly, seasonally. There's one large celebration mixed amongst the different smaller ones. Again, we need to know if we want to focus on eighteen seventy-five, as they did for the Centennial Celebration, or the fifty years between, the hundred fifty years in total, or just currently celebrate our present as we are now. Or all of the above. It's however y'all want to do this. Once we know what kind of celebration or multiple celebrations we want to have, the timing is going to be key. March seventeenth is the anniversary date. However, March is very rainy and very sketchy for outdoor events.
Right.
So we would definitely have to come up with some alternate dates for that. Locations, we could probably get away with closing Main Street for a parade, but not for the day. But we do manage the side streets, so closing all four railroad streets would give you offshoots of Main Street. As long as after our Main Street Freedomist Project, we want our crosswalks, we will have bump-bounce traffic flow, foot traffic flow will be a lot better, and so you will have the ability to bounce between the sides and the side streets if we wanted to do that. That is an option that we can look into. We have Liddy Park, as well as the Mitchell Park, and multiple historic locations around town. And I will get into that on the other side as well. Since this event is going to be fairly large, we are going to need a steering committee. And so I've put together some suggestions for the steering committee. I would very much like for our board to participate. I cannot have any more than two, or we will have a four. However, town hall staff will be involved. I would also like representatives from the Police Department and Fire Department, as safety is going to be a key concern. The Women's Club, they were very active in the Centennial, pretty much ran that. And with the History Museum, they will be very key to a lot of the things that I have in my mind. Other specific organizations like the Qantas, the YABBA and the downtown businesses have volunteered in the past for other events. And I think it would be very helpful to have their input as we go. I'd love to have a local resident and I feel Jim Moss, who every time I speak to, I learn something new about the history of Youngsville would be also key in doing this. The churches, mostly faith baptism covenant, help us quite often with the Christmas parade and other events. But I would love to get all of the churches involved. We would have one representative, but I would love to have members from all the churches and all of the different variant religions to to participate. I think it would be great. With that comes the need for subcommittees. They will break down into fundraising or sponsorship, which is going to be extremely key, especially if we have fireworks. The scrapbook or commemorative book, such as they did in the Centennial, that is something that I really did think about the Women's Club for. A parade committee, an advertising or marketing committee, definitely with some signage for traffic so that people know to avoid Youngsville certain dates and times. Children's activities, we're parking. We've talked about having a parking policy. Hopefully that will be in place before our Sesquicentennial Celebration. Just regular signage again with the advertising and marketing. And then depending on the type of event or multiple events, we will have several subcommittees for them. And these are just some of the ones that we've come up with. We may find as we move forward that we need more or less. Our activities, that's a lot of question marks. So we need to decide which activities women like to see. Once you know what type of activities you want included, it'll better help decide what type of celebration is warranted. This event belongs to the board and the citizens. And I want to make sure that everyone enjoys the festivities and has a great time. I have a vision in my head. I do not want that to overrun what you want and what everybody else wants. So I do want to make sure that everybody has input into this event. These are not in order. These are as we came to them, just in a list. Music, obviously, if we want music, do we want separate stations? Do we want them for per decade or time period? Depending on how we go for that celebration. If we do the streets and we do a fifty years, we could have an eighty street. I think that would be fun. Fireworks have been mentioned quite often. Light shows are also an option. And if you did the fireworks that evening and had multiple different locations, you could also have light shows geared to music that were timed with it. Again, closing Main Street and the side streets, depending on how we wanted to do that and how we wanted to set it up, there are so many options with that. I recommend a special logo. We can get with our logo, the people that did our logo and have one from Sesquicentennial. And I have apparently found out that you can do a snapshot filter for your anniversary. That's going to be Robbie's project. But that was something that was interesting for me. We'll need new banners for the celebration and signage coming into town. Once we get closer to the anniversary date, I feel that speeches with the schools and maybe the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, something to get the children involved. That will be Fonzie's overview there to do some speeches. But just to give, you know, a good history of Youngsville and get the children involved. How we wish to, I really want a parade. But if we want a parade, how we wish to have a parade, do we want clothes? One of the other towns that I looked at and was actually counting had a hundred and fifty horses, a hundred and fifty tractors. And I can't remember what the other hundred and fifty was because I got stuck on a hundred and fifty tractors. I don't want to do that. But we do need to decide if we want to have the parade, do we want to do it like they did back in nineteen seventy five, which everybody dressed in eighteen seventy five clothes? Or just a regular parade to stab a good old time? But there are some questions there. Again, scrapbook committee, like I said, I would love to hit the woman's club up for the museum. Everything that we do for this, the Women's Club's museum will have a copy of for their records. I think a time capsule to be opened in twenty seventy five at the bicentennial celebration would be great. Get things from the residents, local businesses, have little small postcards for the attendees that are from out of town to fill out. But I think that would be a great thing for them to open in fifty years. Historical homes. It depends on who's in the historical homes. I would love to have a tour of the historical homes. That would be if we had multiple events, like maybe one month we had a tour of historical homes, if we could get the homeowners that would be into it. Like, some of the historical homes at Christmas have the Christmas tour. This would be something similar as what's in my head, something like that, that we could get the homeowners involved in. Or even just a tour around town and like a little bit of history from us in the street or something like that. But something like that, I think, would be great if we can, if we can do it. Sports tournament, home run derby or something similar with an ice cream social afterwards. That is something that they did back in nineteen seventy five, was a great idea. The QR Code scavenger hunt with history related data, that would get people to some of these historic locations and a little bit of a work about the the home or the business. And quilting squares, they did have a quilting class in nineteen seventy five as well. But this is something that the Parks and Rec Department is willing to host as one of their art classes would be like quilting squares. So that's a lot of information for you. And I really, really would like for you to take the time and think about your vision for this event. What you see, what you want, things I've missed, things that you think I'm crazy for putting up there. But I'm really looking for comments on the type of celebration you wish to have, recommendations for your steering committee, activities that you would like to see, and ideas that have not been presented or that have been missed. And my contact information is there as well. I would like to have information for the steering committee at the July Board meeting to be about this so that we can go ahead and at least get our first meeting going fairly soon. And we don't necessarily need to have a final thought of what you want for the event. We have time, but we can get everybody on the same page and that and start working on that. If you're anything like me, you're going to hit the idea while you're doing dishes or laundry or something, send me an email or something, I'll care if it's Saturday at three, I'll get it. And we'll add it to the list. But just let me know what your vision is and what you want to see and I'll see what's around it and touch me on a great event.
Well, I'm in favor of doing it all. How realistic that would be is a different story. But I would say that I'd say that we probably need to task ourselves with just looking through all of it and seeing what really stands out. To your point, shutting down, shutting down Main Street is extremely difficult, even for a Christmas parade, which is the longest running in the state of North Carolina. It's difficult to do. But no, I'm a, I'm a fan of of everything that's been presented. Hopefully we'll have some members of our audience out here tonight that would love to be a part of it. I love the idea about having the Women's Club with the museum being involved because they're going to have so much stuff on the, you know, the history and what they can kind of bring to it. So I guess the action you need from us is to direct staff to go ahead and try to start isolating who you want to be on the steering committee?
I don't necessarily need the vote of a specific person tonight. I would like to be able to have that vote at least in July. Because if you can give me your recommendations for steering committee within the next, let's say, two weeks, I can have two weeks to verify and make sure that they're willing to be on the committee. The different civic organizations, they want to appoint their own amongst them, such as the Qantas Club or the Women's Club, or if we have someone specific. I have worked with David Jeros and Carl Lankowski with the Qantas Club often enough to run at a event like this, they are fully capable of that. I know that Jim will be game for it as well. I spoke with Ms. Lala with the Women's Club. She seemed very excited about that as well. But if I can get your thoughts within the next couple of weeks on the steering committee, I can touch base with them if they're willing to serve and we can have a final appointment in July.
I'm, I'm good, I'm literally.
My first step is let's get steering committee and then we start working our way through that. But we do need to start fundraising sooner rather than later, especially if.
Fireworks, trying to move a little bit extreme.
Every time I mention fireworks, our insurance agents just get looks, so just say your name.
It's our birthday, they're gonna just get over that. I, I think what you've got presented here for the steering committee makes total sense. As far as, because again, the action request is to direct staff on recommendations for the steering committee. I mean, do any of the commissioners have any concerns with what's been presented for the steering committee? Because if not, I say we just go ahead and direct staff to to start looking into it.
Yeah, similar to Mayor Flowers, I like everything that I've seen on here. Whether it's practical or not, we'll see. But I definitely like the idea of multiple events because you're not going to find one event that everybody is going to be gung ho over. Whether it's multiple events over a day or spread out.
But you ain't ready to square dance?
I, we did it in elementary school. I can still do see do so. But, but no, if you spread it out, you have opportunities to do the the different activities. So I do like the idea of multiple activities.
I agree with that. And Emily, I love your enthusiasm, just love it. And I can definitely think on the steering committee a little bit, a little bit more and send you an email with any ideas that I have.
Sounds good then. As far as action tonight, though, do you need for us to do anything?
That's up to you if you want to. I mean, I'd rather make sure they're agreeable before anybody. And you need to introduce yourself who would like to be on our steering committee.
Totally fine.
So you don't need, though, a motion to actually ask someone to be on the committee, correct?
No, if you're good with.
What's been presented?
Presented and you don't add or subtract anything like that, I can get started on securing those people for an actual appointment to be steering committee.
Perfect, okay. And then again, it gives us a little bit of time to kind of scale back through it, right? Because I mean, while we would love to do everything, a month long celebration is not going to, I mean, yeah, that's going to be difficult.
Hundred and fifty days for a hundred and fifty years.
Hundred and fifty days. We'll start, it's in March, so we'll start New Year's Day and we'll just throw down three months.
Honestly, I don't think that's a terrible idea.
From the Christmas parade on, we'll just have a big party. The longest running Christmas parade, by the way. Good deal. Well, if, if you don't need for us to take any action on that, we'll certainly take this into consideration and start coming up with ideas and tweaks and recommendations on who to potentially contact. And again, very well done with this. Reports and other business, Mr. Mayor, I get to go first. The golf tournament was a huge success. I want to thank Alyssa, Chief Willie and his staff. The food afterwards, the barbecue, all that stuff was amazing. All the teams and sponsors, it was a really good turnout. I don't know what the total raised was at this time, but obviously, we do these things to bring money into Parks and Rec to help kids out that may be a little bit less fortunate, that can't afford a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and twenty five bucks to play baseball or basketball. And then also to help us with upkeep and upgrading our Luddy Park facility. So congratulations on that. And there was a team that wanted to, Oak City Logistics, that's who it was. So congratulations to Oak City Logistics on their dominant win there. Very happy that we're finally getting the Main Street Improvement Project off the ground and going. For those who don't know, this is something that we've been kicking around forever and a day. When we thought we had funding for it, the funding was pulled out from under our feet to the point where I think I got fed up and upset. The heck with it, we're just going to pay for it because I just got tired of waiting. Luckily, we don't have to fully fund that. We still have to pay money on it, but we don't have to come up with the whole, you know, what is four million dollars that that is going to take to do this. But I would encourage everyone, whether you are, well, if you're in the town limits, you don't really have a choice, but if you're outside of the town limits, find a different route to get to Capitol or to get to wherever you're trying to go. The truck traffic, the eighteen wheelers, the dump trucks, ninety eight, ninety six, go into Wake Forest, come up number one that way. Because these big trucks being stuck on this road, wanting to close down to one lane, it's just, it's going to be a nightmare. I'm proud that we finally got this done because again, there's a lot of, one, we've been working on it forever and a day. But it's been neglected for fifty, sixty, I mean, whoever knows how long. And I'm just glad that we're finally in position to make some changes and to give it the eye candy and the treatment that it deserves. So, and I'll stop with that. Commissioner Brain touched on it in his prayer earlier. I just want to say congratulations to all the seniors that are graduating from high school and college, all the kiddos that are moving from middle school to high school and all the kiddos that are moving from elementary to middle. Enjoy your summer vacation. And that's all that I have. Commissioner Redd?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Percy?
Got nothing for you today.
All right, not to do. Commissioner Brain?
Nothing else.
All right, Commissioner Wiggins?
I've got one comment if I might.
Sure.
A week ago last Monday, I had a medical event. And I wanted to compliment the Youngsville Fire Department and Rescue Squad. My family and employees said that they were there quickly and very efficient. And I appreciate it. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I would echo that sentiment. All of, all of our emergency personnel were just top notch. So thank you guys for what you do. All right, did Commissioner Johnson ever join? I never heard him vote on anything. I don't know. Okay, fair enough. I just want to make sure I didn't skip him if he was online. Ms. Katie Barber Jones? All right, anything in addition from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you said, the Main Street Improvement Project is underway. Equipment is moving, people are walking around and we anticipate the street being torn up soon. They are aware of the Summer Festival on July thirtieth, and so they'll not be having any activity then and it'll be cleaned up as much as possible. But there will obviously be impacts. Primarily, the night work is happening on the front end of the project. And that's when they're actually having to hose down the road to do the water line work. I believe that's the first month and a half, two months. And then they'll be doing more daytime work as they're doing stuff out of the travel. And then lastly, I am certain that any of the other residents in Youngsville feel the same way that I do. And I'm very excited to hear that we finally got responses for our repaving contracts. And we are passing potholes, many of them on railroad, Franklin, Frost, Pine. And then those should be done in the next two weeks or so. And then we're starting with a hundred thousand dollar contract to do a number of smaller projects, well, larger than those, but small projects around the town that includes AG Drive, the Calvert at Nassau, work on, I blanked on the rest of them. Camille's Circle is one of them. And then Bayberry is also one of them. So we're very excited that we're finally giving the respect to the roads that they deserve. And we have a contractor that we can now just quickly move on when we have other projects that need to be done rather than having to go through the process.
Okay, I like, anything else, Mr. Page?
Yes, there is more.
All right. That, any other, any additional comments from staff? Good to go, okay. There is no need to go into closed session, so we'll bypass number nine. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion and a second in discussion before we move to vote. Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.